It's so good to see you all. Hopefully, you can hear me okay in the back. Great, thanks Jeff. So, welcome to our town hall. Welcome to our monthly town hall. It's good to see you all. As you can see, we're set up a little bit differently for a reason. I'll explain why. But in short, we're excited to bring updates, talk about some of the things going on in the district. And nothing more important than celebrating some of our young people, which I'll get to in a moment. But, before we can get to that, I actually have a trivia question for all of you. Anyone know who this gentleman is? Jeopardy, right? I haven't watched it in a while, but I hear he's a millionaire. And the fastest to be a millionaire on Jeopardy in 14 days or something like that. Because he's figured out how to be excellent. Someone else who has been excellent and has been excellent for many years is this person here, who we all affectionately know as Oprah, or some of us call her Auntie, right? For some of us. But nonetheless, we love Oprah and for what she's done. And she has this very specific quote that I thought was powerful for tonight. So this idea of being excellent isn't a new one. It comes from people that have been successful and have done it for a long time. And there are people that I want us to collectively celebrate, even if it's just for a few moments, for their excellence. The last few months and years. Aligning us to our core values, down to the core. These are the six things that drive us, and this being the one that we'll focus on tonight. Okay? With that said, there are three groups. One of the groups tonight we want to celebrate, we wanted to celebrate them first because we understand, I think there's a literacy night tonight at GJW. So we want to make sure that we celebrate them first. The 7th grade and 8th grade girls' basketball team at General Johnny Wilson were LEL champions. Can we give them a round of applause? I will say first and foremost, I'm jealous of them because I always wanted to be that LEL champion, and I fell short. But nonetheless, congratulations to them for all their hard work and effort. And I'm not sure, I see Ms. Jefferson and Ms. Don, you who are here. Is the coach here? Coach around? Coach, there you are, right there. I'm sorry, Coach. If you can come on down so we could celebrate you a little bit more for all of your excellence. Again, we want to congratulate you for not only an outstanding season, but for your ability to continue to make our young ladies even more successful. So we appreciate all that you do every single day, and we appreciate what you are doing for our young people. Thank you again so very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No problem.
Second, that we wanted to celebrate very briefly tonight. Look at those faces, right? Don't you just want to say, "Aww"? These young people are part of our pre-K program. And as you have known, over the past year, we've gone from a transition of being in only three buildings to 10. And in that time, that is not a short or easy task to accomplish. But there's been a team of people, a team of teachers, a team of leaders who've come together to really make those programs what they are. And I will ask Mr. Dieter to come up to explain the progress that we made, and a moment of celebration for all the hard work that is going into it.
Hello! Whoa, sorry, that's really loud. Is that better? That was not on purpose. I'm sorry if I blew anyone's ears out. So, I have some words prepared just to, I think, express my gratitude and appreciation for all of our pre-K staff. Fred Rogers once said, "If you could only sense how important you are to the lives of those you meet, how important you can be to the people you may never even dream of, there is something of yourself that you leave at every meeting with another person." So I don't know the exact context of this quote. Mr. Rogers was, of course, the host of a children's television show, so it's likely that he was speaking this message to the children in his audience, underscoring the central message of all of his work, which was, of course, "You are special." I don't think it's too much of a stretch, though, to imagine that he was also thinking about those who work with children, and specifically, early childhood educators, of which he was one. Is there any group of folks who have a greater impact on the lives of others without ever having the opportunity to see the true scope of that impact? Lucky for us, Lorain is a tight-knit community, and I actually have, in my brief year here so far, seen the scope of the impact that our pre-K teachers and staff have had on their students, their families, and the community at large. When I ask Alicia Pardon, our ECE program coordinator, for her perspective on different pre-K situations that we deal with throughout the year, often she starts by speaking as a parent and telling me about her experience and her son and daughter's experiences in Ms. Patty Spatero's classroom at Garfield. And when she recalls these little details, sometimes exact sentences that Ms. Spatero spoke to her at parent-teacher conferences, it becomes clear to me that Ms. Spatero had a profound impact on not only Alicia's children, but on her. And I don't think it's a coincidence that Alicia is now a key member of our early childhood education team, because I think she saw the impact that early childhood education can have in Lorain. Then there was the time that I sat in a tiny chair, which I'm pretty used to by this point, in Ms. DeRivero's classroom, asking for her help as I tried to quickly learn the ins and outs of preschool licensing requirements. There are a lot of them. The parent of one of her former students was in the classroom, helping her set up for the year. The student was no longer in her class, but Ms. DeRivero had built such a bond with his family that they showed up to help set up a classroom that their child would never set foot in. I could go on and on. The conversation I witnessed with Ms. Ross having with the family of a former student at our Back to School Extravaganza, where they were chatting excitedly about the reading progress he had made. The letters I've received from the families of Ms. Quavis and Ms. Baughman students singing the praises of their teachers and advocating for their children. The email from the mother of one of Ms. Hutman students sharing how moved she was by her visit to Ms. Hutman's classroom and seeing the high expectations that her child was meeting in the classroom. The pure joy of watching Ms. Lyman and Ms. Gilland provide services at the home of a pre-K student on their caseload, laughing and smiling along with the child, all while making sure that she was working hard on her goals. I'm leaving out a ton of examples from every single one of our staff members, but only because I need to keep this under 10 minutes, and I would prefer to stay in the good graces of our communications department, because they decide what goes on the pre-K billboards. And I want to keep that positive. So, Step Up to Quality, five stars. What does that mean? It's something to be immensely proud of. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Step Up to Quality rating system, it is Ohio's system for rating preschools. And it is not a 1 to 5 scale, where 1 is bad and 5 is good. Programs must apply to earn even one star. And that alone is an accomplishment, something to be celebrated. To achieve a five-star rating is to demonstrate excellence in every area you can think of: curriculum and planning, assessment, family and community partnerships, communication and engagement, professional development, and more. And yet, when I review our Step Up to Quality application for one of our schools, double and triple-checking all of our documentation before clicking that terrifying submit button, I can't help but feel that even a five-star rating doesn't capture what makes our pre-K program truly special. There's no place to upload those parent letters that I told you about. There's no place to insert a picture of Ms. Ross and her former student and their family. There's no place for Alicia's testimonial about Ms. Spatero. So I have one request for our pre-K staff who have joined us here today, and to the families, community members, and others who are here as witnesses. Celebrate the five stars, but more importantly, celebrate what's behind the five stars. Celebrate the love, the joy, the learning, the nourishing and flourishing of little minds. Those things tend to get lost in the paperwork, the piles of paperwork, the endless... Okay, you get it. But sincerely, the impact that you all have on Lorain's youngest learners is impossible to fully measure, and it will only grow with time. In 13 years from now, when your students walk across the stage to receive their high school diplomas, the piece of you that you left with them, to borrow some words from Fred Rogers, will shine brightly for everyone to see. So I would love if you all would join me in just celebrating our wonderful, amazing pre-K staff and teachers. And I think we're going to just give you all a token of the Step Up to Quality achievements that you have earned. So as you can see up here, we have schools in different places, and we're celebrating all of them tonight. So we have schools who are newly five-star rated on Step Up to Quality. We have some schools who have been rated before, but they've maintained, they've successfully maintained their five-star rating. And we have schools who are brand-new to pre-K this year, so they're not yet rated, but they're submitting their application this month to get their five-star rating for next year. So we are celebrating the accomplishments and the hard work of all of those schools. So we'll start with the buildings who have maintained their five-star rating this year. Garfield Elementary. Frank Cosinto. Toni Morrison. And Helen Steiner Rice. So now we will celebrate the schools who have newly received their five-star rating for this year. So, Stephen DeHanas Elementary. Congratulations. Flarkmore Elementary. And Hawthorne Elementary. I love it. Hawthorne brought their own banner. That's amazing. And finally, our buildings who are on pace to receive their five-star rating during the 2019-2020 school year. Palm Elementary. Washington Elementary. And Admiral King. All right. Thank you all again very much, and thank you to our wonderful pre-K staff.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter, and thank you all again, teachers and leaders, for being here tonight, but being there every single day for all of our kids. Really appreciate it, and obviously, it's paying off. Last but not least of our three presentations tonight is, again, about this young man, who, if you haven't read our Promisedly Kept Quarterly, he is prominently displayed in there for his excellence academically. And there's a reason why we're bringing him up again. Just for those that may not know the story of Trent. Trent was one of our scholars, one of 2 million scholars across the country who took the ACT, and he was one of 2,700. He was one of 1/10th of 1% of kids across the country to get a perfect score on the ACT. And so, we were thinking about this way before he received these scores, around how do we create a culture of academic excellence? How do we promote excellence that happens in our classrooms every single day? And a group of young people who meet with me pretty regularly came and said, "You know what? We celebrate athletics all the time, and for many, many good reasons, and we'll continue to celebrate athletics." At the same time, they said, "But what about us academically? What about us that do, we do great things in classrooms, teachers are making us better every single day? How do we actually celebrate that?" And they said, "You know what? Why don't we have an Academic Hall of Honor?" And so last year, we came up with a bunch of criteria, and we thought about who would be the judges, and I mean, a really elaborate process to select those that would be the first honorees, whether alum or current young people. But there was a young man who just surpassed all of those expectations. So a young man who just stepped up and said, "You know what? I'm going to get a perfect score on the ACT." And that young man is here with us today. Trent and family, could you please come up? Congratulations, buddy. Looking sharp as always. I got to keep up with you. That's good, that's good. Hey, sir. Very nice to meet you. How are you? Very nice to meet you. So, I present to the family a picture of Trent and his perfect ACT score. And I know, as a mother who's sitting at home probably watching this presentation, my mother, she always wants those moments to cherish. Even though this will live in our building forever, we want to make sure mom and dad have something in their home to remember the excellence that your son has produced for himself, for your family, and for our community. So again, thank you, Trent. Thank you, family, for doing so many great things for our school. All right. Thank you again. Thank you again. Thank you so very much. And with that said, here's just a picture for those that are curious. This is already up in our school building. So if you go over to the high school, you will see the beginning of our Academic Hall of Honor, the beginning that we hope will grow into something beautiful with more and more names of young people who do great things like Trent Jackson for our school district. So can we give him just one last round of applause? And hopefully, you saw through the arc of just those presentations, not only athletically are we gifted and talented, but we can see if we start early with all of our intense efforts to improve our pre-K programs, we'll see the fruits of our labor and have more Trent Jacksons on the wall in our Academic Hall of Honor. But most importantly, going out in the community, continuing to do great things. With that said, those great things come from, again, those core values, which I have spoken to. And our job is to continue to figure out how do we stay connected to our core, to our core mission and work. And that process began with our Lorain Promise over a year and a half ago. And as you all know, it took a lot of time for us to really get to where we wanted to be, based on the feedback that we got from the community over and over again, asking for more feedback, surveys, and other information, to figure out what are the most important things to do. As we went through the Lorain Promise, we realized that we had to figure out a process to continue that going, right? Because we did that for about 90 days, which was, again, mandated upon us, but we needed the conversation to continue. We needed to continue to get feedback from all of you on a regular basis. And in short, you all have seen a similar chart to this, but we go through a process like this every single year, where we observe schools and school progress against the initiatives we put in place based on data. We spend a lot of time looking at and evaluating surveys, meeting in small focus groups or otherwise. We spend a lot of time thinking about, how do we identify the priority for a year? We want to make sure it's right, it's the right thing, and then ultimately, we respond to the community, which we're here tonight to do, to finalize our priority for the 2019-2020 school year. With that said, we also have a bunch of meetings in between, right? Those four episodic bubbles up there are not just in isolation, they're coordinated with other meetings that we have throughout the school year. So, we put up here just an idea for you to think about how many times we have spent just trying to get enough voice for our initiatives and enough voice behind what we're trying to do, and intentionally just have been focused on getting more and more feedback through different avenues, whether it's a teacher-focused group, whether it is a community forum, or our CBS meetings that we have on a monthly basis. At that point, and you all have seen these slides, if you have been to our town halls in the past, you have seen the past January, we spent some time reflecting on the things we had heard from the community, everything from getting better curriculum in front of our kids, from ensuring that, you know, we're doing the right things to get our families involved, and improving morale of teachers and other things of that nature. And we also realized, the last but not least, is that there was a lot of uncertainty coming. And so how do we solidify ourselves around one direction and make sure we're pushing on the right thing through the creation of our priority for 1920, which is to create a system of excellent schools? So that system is this. You all have seen this in one form or fashion, has four points to it, right? Improving the curricular resources and the relevance of the curriculum that we provide. We have to think about how do we create those shared expectations that are based on trust? How do we spend more time creating a joyful culture that is reflective and is based on growth? And again, the voice of the community being the driver for everything that we can do. So with that said, we looked at that in comparison to last year, and we reflected on the fact that last year, we said, "We're actually going to try to tackle one strategy from each of the commitments." And we heard something pretty loud and clear, and this middle feedback segment that I'm going to put up here in a second kind of codifies exactly the challenge we were facing after initiating five different initiatives. We heard this. This comment is so powerful for so many ways. One, I'm very happy to hear someone speak up and say, "You know what? This was a lot. This was a lot for in year one, and we really respect that feedback, and we want to do better next year." We also realized that, you know, all are well-intended, there's a lot of new pieces, but how can we absorb all of those things? And then as we go into next year, I can't wait to figure out how we can be even better, right? So all of those things combined in that comment, I thought were very powerful. And as a result of that comment and other comments that came from surveys, focus groups, and otherwise, we decided, you know what? We're going to focus on one commitment in the Lorain Promise and one priority: creating a system of excellent schools. So as you think about it, going from five to one, I think, is significant, but I also think we'll get to the same depth that we want to see. So as we think about 2019-2020, we said, "Okay, how do we go from this idea of our priority, which we identified, and getting feedback from individuals that are working in our school buildings and communities?" So over the past month and a half, we spent significant amount of times having focus groups. We had 12 different focus groups on different days across the district to get feedback from individuals. And over that time, we had 75-plus participants giving us additional feedback and making sure we were thinking about the right solutions for the system of excellent schools. We were thinking about the right key points we needed to address to really move this district forward. And most important, to make sure that all of our voices, all of our community's voices, were heard. Now we're saying, "Community, we heard that feedback, we have feedback from all of those focus groups, we want to make sure we heard the right thing." So you see around the room, there are four screens set up, and the minute we break up into four corners, because we want people to have the opportunity to have a more intimate conversation around a set of topics that were already a part of our focus groups, already identified as a priority for the school year. But we want to hear from you to make sure we're thinking about this the right way. We want to make sure, before we put it into action, that we heard everything that we possibly could hear from our community a second time. So with that said, there are four corners around the room, and I'll give you an orientation of how this will go. Each corner will have about 12 to 14 minutes, give or take a few, to have a conversation around a few things. One, here are the key points that came out of the focus groups that we had over the past month and a half. The second is here are the possible solutions that we had identified to address the things that the community and schools and teachers have told us we need to improve. And then third, help us figure out what are the right next steps. Even though we may give you five or six solutions that came up, but what is the right one? What is the right two steps we need to take? And then ask for your help to continue moving this forward. So it won't be enough to just make sure we have the right solution, we're going to need individuals to be a part of creating and implementing that solution. So first and foremost, I want to make sure that we're broken up into the right areas. Barb and Bill are here up front. If you can just show away, they'll be the first group up here who will talk about standards-based grading, the Lorain Promise, Excellent Schools Dashboard, and Sped and Gifted, we're all clustered in the same topic. If you want to start there, you will go there. Scholar Behavior and School Safety is right up here, right up front, and that will be with Jeff Hawkes in a few minutes. And then Scott and myself, we will be back corner, thank you Jeff, back corner, back there. Strategy and Innovation, Professional Development, and Career Advancement. And then Jeff Karuski and Sarah will be there in the back with the Family Action Network and the Three Cs Experiences, if you wanted to talk a little bit more about those. Again, there is going to be a chance to rotate, and there will be an opportunity for you to hear other voices, but at this time, please gravitate to the corner where you would like to start your conversations. And at that point, you can ask all the questions that you want, any public comment that you want to bring, you will bring to those corners. Thank you.
So how to create the right questions and other things that will supplement learning for all of our kids, but more importantly, help our teachers grow. So those were some of the key points that were identified from these groups. So here are just some of the solutions that came up in each of the separate focus groups. So, Strategy and Innovation, a couple things that came up from the folks in that group were, one, survey staff for the PD they need, substance and structure, so make sure that we really are giving folks a voice on what the PD is, that they feel like they most need, and making sure that we're aligning for playing to that. Two, determining the best structure for full-day PD, so knowing that our calendar has monthly PD days, full PD days built in next year, thinking about what's the best way to structure that, to be able to differentiate and do some of the things that Mr. Hardy was talking about. Three, professional development to train your digital and end date. And being in this group, one of the things that I think this is really getting at, is train the trainer, is something that came up a lot in our group. So like, having an opportunity to have certain staff members get trained on something and then come back and train the rest of the staff, to really like maximize their capacity and leadership and make sure that as many of you as possible get access to that. to that. Making a list of what curriculum software is available, making sure we're making the best decisions about that. And then making a list of what curriculum software each building is using and trying to identify, like, what are the ones that are most aligned to the Lorraine Way, and trying to narrow it down so that it doesn't feel as overwhelming if there's so many.
I think for professional development, as you can see, there's a strong trend between what innovation meeting came up with and what professional development focus group kind of came up with, and you hear and see being more intentional, right? So when we think about the specific means that our teachers use every single day, what are they? And are we addressing them directly, right? So about a week and a half ago, I had a chance to be a substitute teacher in fifth grade. It was absolutely fun, but boy, I tip my hat to all of you that are professors every single day, because it is not easy. And being in that classroom had me realize that there's a lot of brain space that a teacher has to, you know, go through another, you know, understanding of a new curriculum or new digital resource, or whatever it might be, because you're so, your time's so much spent in front of kids, right? And so there's a lot of time and dedication in front of kids. So how do we make that easier for you all? So if we're more intentional with our meeting, if we actually structure our days stronger and we spend our time more strategically, I think our teachers, our staff, will get more out of it over time. And then I think the resounding piece from this group that speaks a lot is the class levels for all buildings have time to take. Right? I think there's something about understanding what's going on across a school. And even some teachers I've even spoken to, you know, having all sixth-grade teachers meet, all seventh-grade teachers meet, all science teachers, so we can get to that vertical and horizontal alignment that we've been longing for.
Parents, like, they don't necessarily come to work. We're going to work on next year, making it a whole bunch, and we're going to add a little bit of, you know, awareness education mixed in, and we're going to set that first. We generally get a lot of individual reach out and more reference services from parents when they're busy, for those kinds of things, and we have a lot of that online. So that is a blind spot. We need to hopefully reach parents that are necessary, who are being engaged.
Thank you for being here. This group is focused on professional development and strategy. Those three were both, you know, are next year before awards. Second bullet, it's in that area. So how do we create a total of teachers' learning for both of those groups and collection of people in the three focus groups that really push upon?
So, thanks for jumping us forward to the question, which we've seen already, but... So these are some of the, this is sort of our synthesis of what came up in these three divisions that we talked about. I think like the biggest headline is that our way of approaching professional learning for all employees, that includes professional development and career advancement, needs to become stronger. And I think the emphasis here is all employees, so we really need to think about how are we differentiating PD and meeting the needs of new teachers, experienced teachers, teachers across grade levels, so that everyone feels like I'm getting something to teach them from anywhere I am currently, with something that we heard a lot of here across the test. The idea of, folks want to have opportunities where someone who's really invested in a particular topic could go get training on that and then bring it back to the district and then provide training for their building or their grade-level team. Like, we already have some folks who are really invested in foundations, which is our foundational skills program in K2, and they went and they received training, and now they provide coaching. And that can be a really meaningful opportunity. So we heard, like, folks want to do more of that, if they're really invested in something, what opportunities could they have to really own them? Go get the training and then bring that their lesson back.
Trent, how many degrees you got? You still get it?
Hi, hi.
Oh, I do. I've dug on him less since he's been gone. We missed one year, we're going to six.
So for teachers to create their own PD based on their excellent skill. And then just, and only being for teachers, that day is all about teachers creating it, leading it, and...
Rest practice.
Yes, right, right.
Showcase.
Perfect. We could call it that.
The BPS, the best practice showcase.
The best practice showcase. I like that. Yeah, yeah.
Believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our time. However, if there are additional questions that weren't answered, or you have additional questions for us as a collective, please submit those questions on note cards that, if you don't have them, we'll hand them out, but those note cards will be collected and answers will be provided. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.